This time we'll call the meeting to order.
That's right. Father God, in heaven, we just thank you for tonight and thank you for these men and women who come here together, who love this city. And I pray that you bless them and help them make good decisions for the future of Concordia. And we just pray that you will give us the opportunity to learn and to move forward. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Let's leave this to the flag of the United States.
There any changes in the agenda?
We're going to approve the agenda as amended. Or approve the agenda?
It's been moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to proclamation's recognitions presentations. The public hearing for the 2021 budget amendments. The public hearing is now open. And we'll have any public comments on the item? Hearing none. Now closed. Moving on to public comments. Hearing none. Moving on to the action agenda, the 2021 budget amendment.
So, as you saw, we've already done this and I just spoke with Justin and we do not need to vote on it again, so I guess technically it's not action. But I forgot to publish for the public hearing, so did that before this meeting now. And that box is checked, so we already did approve the budget amendment, so there should be nothing else that we do now. Sorry.
Do we continue to approve?
No, we don't have to do that.
But now you're, you should be fine.
Moving on to the audit engagement letter.
This is for the same audit company that we've had since I started and they are the same cost they've been for the last, or last few years now, thirteen thousand dollars. Like it says in there, we've never paid the full cost. We paid a little extra last year, but that was the additional for having the federal audit performed. Probably need again, but as far as, I'm always pleased with them and they haven't raised their rates like we never paid before.
The work as it needs to be.
Yeah, and they haven't been here in the last few years. That's how it costs too, but I think they'll probably come. Just a little push from them to come this next year because we have a new software, so there'll be new reports and new, I don't know.
But would that then we may be able to anticipate that there might be an increased amount of work to be done?
Yes. So we might hit the, might hit the actual amount.
That would make sense to me. I would anticipate that.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the audit engagement letter with Jared Gilmore and Phillips for the year ending December thirty one, twenty twenty one, in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Wentz to authorize the mayor to sign the audit engagement letter with Jared Gilmore and Phillips for the year ending December thirty one, twenty twenty one, in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the minutes of the October twentieth, two thousand twenty one meeting.
I'm going to approve the minutes of October twentieth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Beldon to approve the minutes of the October twentieth, two thousand twenty one meeting. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to appropriation ordinance number twenty.
I move to approve the corporation ordinance. Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Wentz and second by Commissioner Hatch to approve appropriation ordinance number twenty. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Sorry, Regina. Motion passes. Moving on to the funding request for general public transportation.
All right. Thank you guys for allowing us to join you again. It wouldn't be us coming to see you if I didn't have a typo again. So that is a reprinted of the PDF that was sent to you. Every year we do a three percent hourly adjustment to all of our OCCK employees. The form that I sent you in PDF included zeros. It didn't show those decimal points that were in that, so this is, the number should match up a little bit. Love to make a joke about it. We're keeping you on your toes, keeping you awake in this cold time. So let's jump into the presentation, just give you another quick update, kind of let you know what we've been up to. So we can keep rock and roll in public transportation here. So we've got our on-demand service. We are still waiting on a couple more numbers to come in, but we're at six hundred and thirty-three rides in October. That was ran just a little bit ago, so I will have at least one more week of rides to report in that. So we're still keeping true with that really great ridership and really taking care of that general public. The next slide is our demographics. Just wanted to sprinkle that in. One thing that I do want to point out, I know you guys can all read that very tiny text, but one thing I do like to point out, we do offer that general public transportation. Something that gets a little bit confusing, we can provide just transportation to the elderly or people who are disabled. But that general public transportation lets us fall under fifty-three eleven and that provides a lot more funding options for us. And so where that, like in that middle one with that passenger type, that looks like a very ginormous general public. That doesn't capture people who have hidden disabilities, people who are maybe their disability is in the financial area, that type of thing. So it doesn't really get that cross-section of how well we get to help everybody in this community, no matter what their disability or ability is. Same thing with that first one with the destinations. People can choose to let us know where they're really wanting to go. Talking with a couple of passengers, they don't always want to share that. They want to get to where they're going, but they like to walk around the corner. They love to, love to keep that, that information private. So that's why some of those demographic looking things, they don't truly show in a perfect picture how, how well we're capturing the need of the community based on ability and, and need of the, of the passengers. Okay, making sure we stay short. We obviously want to open up the door. We totally, Michelle and I hopped in the car last time and we were like, wow, we really put a lot of pressure on you guys. We were awkward with our budget timing, with our planning going forward. We, we truly just want to take care of the citizens. We just want to make sure that people are able to have livability here. We want to make sure the economy stays local. We want to take care of people. So we took that step back and we did put a lot of pressure on you guys. We, of course, want, want that partnership, but it's going to take a lot longer to get that sustainable. And we want to really work together and find that partnership with you guys so that we can sustain it. If I just said, hey, we need all of it right now, that's unfair of us to say, but if we can work on anything at this moment, great. But what I really want to talk about is what that partnership goes looking forward. How can we bring more information? How can we work together in the next couple of months and then in the next couple of years so we can work on that sustainability and make it make sense? Any adjustments to routes, any adjustments to service? I want to work through that with you guys. So I wanted to take that pressure off of you because that was, it was unfair of us to just throw it at you the way we did with the timing that we did. So one of those pieces is those Medicaid trips without a ton of clear historical information here with just those trips. I know Medicaid trips can be a huge opportunity for us. City Match obviously will work together with you guys as we move together with whatever that can look like. And we'll, we'll be honest from our standpoint, and I know you guys have been very honest from your standpoint, and we really, really appreciate that. Also building local partnerships and then local collaborations. We're here, we're here to take care of people, whatever that needs to look like going forward. So it makes sense for you guys, so it makes sense for us, and so it makes sense for, for the community. So a little bit more about Medicaid here. Based on our numbers with our budget as a whole of OCCK transportation, we can estimate probably about three thousand dollars per year. And I'm going to be very honest, I was very, very conservative. I think we can bust the heck through this goal. But I didn't want to throw out a number and then us not have it budgeted correctly and then say, well, the Medicaid service wasn't there, so now we're, now we're in trouble. But if we can hit that, that stays on par with the rest, with the rest of our services across Salina, North Central Kansas and Abilene. Okay, hopping to that next slide. Sure. So as an ability manager, I get to talk about some of the fun things. So what transportation does for Concordia, for Cloud County, for North Central Kansas. So it definitely helps with job impact. People can get to in front work if they were not able to before. They can have better attendance at their employment. It generates jobs. Since we've got drivers and dispatchers that are working here in your local community and increases productivity because people are not wondering about how they're going to get home. Makes it pretty easy for them to do that. Also contributes to local spending. So again, your employees are local and they get to spend their money here. We're also spending money here with gas and different things like that. And then passengers really get to stay here and live here where they want. They don't have to move away from this community to go somewhere else where they can get transportation to the services that they need. And then on the short and the long term, so every dollar spent on transit, and this is a nationwide survey and it's true, in Kansas, it's true here in this community. Every dollar spent on transit is a four dollar return on your investment. So that's a pretty big number, we think. It's important for everyone to kind of understand that and to know that transit is more than just about getting someone from A to B. There's a lot of behind the scenes things that goes into that. All right. So a couple of things, working on the local collaboration, local, local partners. I've worked really closely with Annie, Chamber of Commerce, really making sure we have a presence there and that we're building it. Because it's very easy for me to be an outsider. I was not born and raised in Concordia, but I hear very, very much about this place and I care very much about my team and the people that we get to serve. So how can I be more involved even at a distance? How can I be here and, and show up so we can take care of people? We would love to work with you guys, strategic and comprehensive planning. We would love to come to the plate with anything that you guys are meeting. Bringing industry into town, working with local employers that are meeting more options, more, more access to employment. Love to be a part of that, of that planning and a part of that solution in the future. And then, of course, being present at resource roundtables here in town. And then we are launching a transportation committee and I'll have Michelle share a little bit about that. Sure. So this is something that we thought would be important to have here. We've kind of had a little bit of that in the past, some meetings that I've been, been involved in. But we would like to figure out how we can bring all of the community partners together and figure out how we can make this entire thing work for everyone as a community. So we thought, as we're going forward on this, if we hold some monthly meetings, so I would be there. We also have a cross-section of ridership potentially and then a cross-section of community partners. And then we're hoping that we can grow this into what we're calling champions. We'll talk about a little bit more about that here in a minute. But that group would kind of be responsible for being those local champions, talking about transportation, talking about how important it is promoting ridership, being an influencer and gaining community support. And then again, being an advocate for those people that need this service. And then our, our last point is that go Concordia champion. You can be a go Concordia champion. We obviously wanted to take the pressure off of you guys. See what we could do with local partnerships. Our timing was just really stinking off. And we're hoping in the next six months, the next year, and then potentially going forward, how we can build those local, our local partners to take the pressure off of you guys and take the pressure off of us as we move forward and whatever we're able to, to figure out for that sustainable local match. So we developed be a go Concordia champion. You can donate as an individual business. We can work together on what that means to get free rides to your employees. What that means to get free rides to people shopping with you or having access to tourism, anything like that. So that we have different levels that people can contribute and we would love to set up meetings with people. We get the opportunity to talk to some groups next week. Then we also stopped by the hospital and the health department today. Both are very excited about participating with us and being a part of this local match and really, really making a go. We're just, it's still in those starting phases, nothing set in stone like in the, in the letter that I said, but we're definitely moving in a, in a positive direction to make this, make this work. Okay, that is all.
All right. So man, commissioners, the assets on the table right now is some sort of funding to go toward a, a local match. Initially, the ask was a little over seventy-four thousand out of our fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget. And then an additional thirty-seven out of the fiscal year twenty-three budget, so six month and a twelve month option there. And then an additional eight thousand to go toward a replacement of a van. As you can see from the memo, if we, if you choose to authorize even a portion of that, we will have to reallocate funds from other places that are for programming and services that's already set up for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. That is at your discretion. You are in charge of, of those budgets and you can choose to do that. As you can see from the recommendation, staff couldn't in good faith feel like we could recommend that because we'll have to reallocate some resources around. And as we're looking at this from a staff perspective, we know that OCCK is looking for a long-term partnership here. They've stated that, so it doesn't make us feel good about reaching into reserves and just pulling from there because it's not really, in our viewpoint, it's not really a one-time funding thing. It's going to come from multiple years. So really do feel like we need to take a look and find where we can help out from an operational budget standpoint. But knowing that the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget is already set in stone, we just don't feel good about recommending where that could come from in, in this situation. But again, the budget is under your authority, so you can, you can make that decision as well. But we'll leave it to you to discuss, ask questions and give us some guidance.
So when did you take over? First of July?
First of July.
So you knew when you took over that they were having a deficit every month? Our budget year, we do our budgeting in July.
Yes. That, that was our, we totally, totally missed that opportunity for, to, to come speak with you because at the time that y'all would have been planning your budget, we didn't even know that we needed to step in here and, and help the transportation and take, take, take that on. Yeah, we a hundred percent recognize our timing is totally, totally awkward, totally off, because I think even, even in July, had we come to you all with this similar ask, it still would have been as equally like, oh my goodness, that's huge. Oh my goodness, this timing is awful. So we just, unfortunately with this situation, we had, we just had a really big lack of timing in, in how we build this budget together. As OCCK, we do have enough to work to make, make transportation happen. But we know going into twenty twenty-two and into twenty twenty-three, we do know that we have to have those local partners and we are working to acquire that. So we don't have to see a dip in service next July or we would love to be able to expand, but we have to secure the service as it is. Two other things that I didn't mention, I have had two changes on our team since we brought you guys that original number and even since I sent that last email. Two full-time people, one in the allocations and then one full-time driver has decided not to continue driving with us and then one is retiring. So that does provide some flexibility in what our estimated budget was as well. So once, once again, it could be, we could come in way underneath that budget. We could come in right at it. But yeah, a hundred, a hundred percent, when we came, came in to wrap our arms around the senior center and take that, take that piece on, the, the timing was just awkward. But we knew we had to, we had to be here to take care of, I mean, seven hundred rides on average each month. That's a lot of people that if we just said, hey, senior center, you just go ahead and just don't give rides anymore, that seven hundred would be a lot of people not having access to their job, not having access to nutrition or work or anything else that they're not disclosing to us, access to their community or a friend's house, that type of thing. So we, we knew we had to be here and we could figure out that funding afterwards. We just get to have those really awkward conversations to figure that out.
Well, it, it does bother me that you knew you had a deficit and yet you're coming to us. When you took it on.
Sure.
And.
Yeah, we, we took, we took it on. We knew that OCCK could handle it for a certain amount of time and we are still within that time. And that's why we're here to look at how we go forward and how do we secure that funding at least starting June one? If we can start funding in January, that's awesome. But I have enough in our budget to continue strongly until next July. We know that starting in July, we're going to need those partnerships. And if we think about starting in July, I think we have enough time with working with you guys, with working with the, with the community, that we're going to still be able to find opportunity. I also have some opportunity with KDOT. I've applied for special grant seasons in there. I think those grants are sitting on Secretary Lorenz's desk. So we, we are working every, every possible opportunity to, to make sure that service is not discontinued. Service continues at, at the same exceptional level. Yeah.
So I, I appreciate that very much because I do, I do believe in the benefit of having public transportation for all the reasons that you listed. I mean, I know that I, I personally have clients that benefit from public transportation. I, I think we would also have a difficult time answering to the department heads as to how we couldn't come up with seventy-six thousand dollars for the budget request that they have. But now we have the money to do that.
You have to wave a magic wand for OCCK. Wouldn't we love, wouldn't we love that?
You know, I, I joke with almost everybody I've worked with that I ordered a magic wand when I first went into practice and it's been on the backorder ever since. So I'm still optimistic it may arrive. I, I do want to find a way to have a partnership. I, I, we, we really do work hard to be very good stewards of the taxpayer money that we have. And so when we put our budget together, there's not, there's not a lot of flex space in that. When I say not a lot, it's really very little. But I, I do want to find a way to make the partnership work. I think that finding ways to have conversations with these community partners and finding champions is a phenomenal way to go. I think that there might be some local grant money. I think that there's a lot of different opportunities that we have where then we could, we could have a more concrete number to work with. As to, okay, this is, it looks like that we've been able to secure X, Y, and Z from these different agencies. So what our ask from the city is this. And we can set up towards a sustainable budgetable amount. And I think that that's, that's something that I think, I know I'm in favor of. But it's, it's difficult to figure out how to pull from that because most of those dollars, they're already spent at this point. And so it's, I'm not sure how I could. I've been struggling with it a great deal because I see the value, but I don't know how I can talk with Bron or Jeremy about, hey, we're going to need ten thousand dollars back for me to do budgets to make this work when we, we. Our budget processes, Amber does a wonderful job of making them as painless as possible, but they're fairly involved in how we can do the most we can with the dollars that we have. So I do want to figure out a way to make a partnership work. I just don't know what amount I could write. But what can I write today that's not going to take away from everything else we get from you?
Absolutely. And that, that's totally understandable. And yeah, but we, we talked about that long-term sustainability. We, we knew, I don't know, maybe a little bit bull in the china shop. We kind of come in and we, we kind of put that large number at an awkward time. We would prefer that long-term sustainability as much as we possibly can. If the go Concordia champions gets, buys us the time to get through that, that's awesome. I don't have the manpower for the next fifteen years to be working on small donations, but I believe in this so much that a hundred percent I will every single effort. So it buys us the time to have that collaboration together to find those ways and to make, make it make sense for the next budget season and a hundred percent I'm on board.
And I think if the community recognizes the presence that you have here and recognizes the benefit of it, it's just thus far, it's not been something that's needed to be considered. And so I think taking some time to place things in places, I think that there might be hopeful that there will be that willingness. But I think that people see the benefit in the community as a whole. And so finding a way to feather that into existing budgets, I think is a very workable solution. But this might, might take a little time, but I don't, I think once it's in place, it can be fairly sustainable.
Yeah, I appreciate kind of the turn of the events very much. Thank you.
Yes.
Just because coming into this meeting, I was a little apprehensive about that. It seemed as though that, you know, maybe the budget wasn't necessarily an oversight, but a tactic to, you know, at, at a last minute ask and, you know, none of us feel good about making decisions that quickly. What I would recommend tonight is to not fund for now, but then look to a positive future of looking, putting this in our, you know, looking at opportunities for the next year's budget. And working out that way, encouraging you all to really explore all of our local funding opportunities too. We didn't have any applications to the community foundation this month. So, you know, that's a really good source to go to as well.
No, I don't have anything.
Do we have any of that money from the rescue plan, the federal money that we got for COVID? We have that allocated to several projects right now and it's already in the process of being spent. I'd have to go back and look at the parameters of it. I don't know, are you guys familiar with parameters on that, if that's allowable under this or not? And then, and then that would be considered one-time money coming in, so not sustainable. But I could go back and take a look at the parameters and could share, bring back a refresher on how those monies were allocated so far. Is that something you'd like me to do?
Well, I. Yeah. Talking out loud, I would wonder, there's been a mention that, that monies that weren't allocated towards other communities that are going to be further filtered out through the communities that more receptive.
I think we got an extra three thousand dollars out of that, or like seven hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
Okay. So is that the end of it or is there, there be more that continues to filter in or?
That's the end of it as far as I'm aware.
Yeah, I, I mean, especially in the short term, but I do know that we've already talked about how to use that money. And it's a little hard when you drive down the streets and hit hot holes.
Right.
You know, and we, we never have enough money for that. Yeah. So I definitely don't want to take money away from somebody else's budget.
So is it, is it fair to say then that the immediate time pressures is no longer present?
Totally, totally.
So then as we, as we look at maybe some of the cares money that has come in, that, that I don't know that it would be necessary for there to be a formal presentation such as this, but to be able to look at it from staff recommendation, we might be able to put together some amount. My guess would be that any amount would be helpful.
A hundred percent.
So that there might be some of that that we could look into is what has been allocated and what, I know that's only three thousand dollars if anything helps. But we might be able to, be able to figure out if there is anything. If we have some time to be able to do that instead of, do we do all of it? Do we do none of it? Do we, how do we, understanding a bit more kind of where we are and how we can move forward in a more sustainable way?
Yeah.
I'd be open to, if, if there is something, I think that I'd like to try to do what we can. If there's not, then I want to work towards figuring out what that might be in the future. Because I definitely do want to be a partner. I want the city to be a partner in that. Inability to do that now isn't necessarily, I don't want that to be reflective of unwillingness to move forward together. So I want to, I want to make sure that we continue forming that relationship and building that. So I want to, I want to make sure that we continue forming that relationship and building that. I do believe in it. I really do. I promise I do. So if there's a way we can make something that I can see we can, I don't want to forget what we've done earlier.
Yeah, I totally appreciate that. And yeah, we could, we could totally see it on your guys' faces. We were giving you guys something so huge. It was a bit unfair to spring it on you like we did. And then a hundred percent, we are just looking for a way that we take that next step forward together. And yeah, the how do we do it the right way? How do we do it the way that's going to take care of this, that, since how do we do it? So it makes sense for your guys' budget. How do we make it make sense for our budget? A hundred percent. We're more than willing to have all of the conversations.
And I think after we see some of the other funding. I mean,
Absolutely.
Then you have a better idea of sure how much. I mean, I think it's a good program too, but
Oh, absolutely.
But I oh, I had a little trouble figuring out when you knew there was a deficit in their budget every month. For the transportation, you took it over, that you didn't have a plan in mind or how you were going to come up to that money.
We, sure, we knew that we were covered. I mean, we knew that we were covered until these number thirty-one because KDOT is matching everything a hundred percent because of cares money. So we knew that we had some cushion in there. We also knew that the mission of OCCK was not going to allow us to not at least try. I mean, that, I mean, that's not OCCK's mission to just let something fail that we know that we could do something about. So I think that's why we took it on with that two-week notice. Because we knew that we could do that and we knew that we had a little bit of cushion to try to figure out those pieces. I mean, we, we we had that conversation. We knew, you know, we're taking no risks with this. But it was a risk that we had to take because OCCK didn't do it. Who else was going to? Sure. There wasn't another option. So I feel like I mean, it may not make sense, but it made sense. Yeah, with, with, with your mission, you're exactly right. And then another piece that you mentioned with, with that Go Concordia Championship, obviously the ridership is there. There is a very obvious need that people are loving the service. There I've been on Facebook groups, everybody's wanting more. They're wanting nights, they're wanting weekends. We have to secure the current eight-to-four service first, and then we can start looking at how, how we help in those extra areas for the shift that gets off at six o'clock instead of at three o'clock. How do we get the person to work at eight? We can start expanding in that way. So the need is a hundred percent there. And I think with, with this program, it's, it's going to demonstrate to us and, and to everybody else that people, people believe in it and they want this to be in, in the community. So I think we're going to get, we're going to get quite a few positives out, out of this opportunity.
I, I certainly hope so. I think that it's, I hope you find a benefit in it. And gainful employment's a pretty important aspect to be able to support oneself and if one's not able to provide or get to their place of work. So it's a very important piece.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is an action item tonight, so you can choose to approve a request for a specific amount, deny a request, or table this to a future meeting. Are there any options?
How far to the future for me to take one of them?
Technically, you can do it indefinitely. Generally, in this situation, what you would do is the suggested way of doing it is to make a positive uh, motion. So you would make a motion essentially to
I guess my, my thought would be to table this for a meeting, say the first meeting in February or March, where we're starting to work towards budget request time. We've had an opportunity to figure out who our champions are. That, that we kind of have a, a, a better pulse on where we are, what's going on, and then we can have some of that information as we start planning for the next year's fiscal budget and start planning for ours. That would give us some time to put it together.
I guess I'd argue that you would, they're asking for the request for twenty-twenty-two, so I would deny this one. But maybe with the caveat to look forward to a conversation on about the twenty-twenty-three budget. We won't be considering twenty-two funding.
And I would certainly entertain.
Motion. Okay, I would make a motion to deny the request for twenty-twenty-two, um, but encourage a request for twenty-twenty.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hutchinson and second by Commissioner Hatch to deny the current funding request for fiscal year twenty-two forward to a robust conversation about partnership fiscal year twenty-three. Any further discussion?
And I think they need to come when CloudCore, the library, all the others come and request their funding by next year. So you need to make sure you do that. So we aren't going through this again.
And that's what we do in other
Need further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Do you regret that? I do look forward to it.
Thank you.
Appreciate you having everyone in this conversation. Moving on to the housing study and market analysis consultant.
The big commissioners, I believe Kim is on Zoom. Kim, is that you?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, thank you. Okay, so Kim is driving right now. But she and I worked together to create a request for proposal for a housing study and market analysis. This came back from discussions earlier this year. We talked about housing needs in our community. And what do we need to do? We had talked about creating a subcommittee under CloudCore, uh, which was approved by, by their board earlier this year as well. It's a community resources committee. And that's been assembled to include um, positions that the membership is kind of still in flux right now, but we want to include a, a developer, a Realtor, an attorney with property law expertise, uh, the county appraiser, uh, representative from a title company, and then directors from the CloudCore Board of Directors, as well as Kim and I on this housing committee, um, to be at the community resources committee to discuss and try to discover housing solutions for what we perceive to be a problem. We know also at the same time that if the city wants to embark on a comprehensive plan update, which we're due for every, every ten years, the housing study is a huge component of that. And data gleaned from a housing study and a market analysis is going to feed the comprehensive plan. It's going to feed decisions related to our perceived housing problem and help us to understand how we can allocate resources. We've talked with you about, or earlier this year, also about pursuing a rural housing incentive district to use that as a potential way to create a new housing subdivision. We've talked about using the middle income housing program to create those modern incomes homes. Um, single-family homes that are being sought after right now that are having a difficulty to, to find. So we believe that the housing study and market analysis is going to tell us if our perception is true or false and help us to guide us on where we need to go. Do we need to pursue that RHID? Do we need to pursue middle income housing? Our single-family homes, what we need to pursue, what price point do we need to target? So that's kind of the goal here. So we created a request for proposal, sent that out. Um, we specifically targeted four consulting firms that were recommended across Kansas by various cities that had used those within the last five years or so. We also advertised it in the blade, published it on our website, so any other, any other companies could take a look at it. The deadline came and went. We contacted the companies and they all, we're just inundated right now. Apparently, everybody's doing housing studies, especially small rural communities that are starting to see an increase in demand for housing. So they asked for a two-week extension, which we graciously agreed to, because we wanted to get something back. And we received two proposals back. One from Five Rural Rural Planning out of an area near Carney, Nebraska, and RDG Inc. out of Omaha, Nebraska. RDG is the company that stood in statewide housing study. Five Rural Rural Planning typically works with communities five thousand or less. We know from our recent twenty-twenty census that we are above five thousand. We are five thousand one hundred and eleven, which is an awesome feat, but we're right at the top end of their as their typical, typical demographic for a company. We assembled a subcommittee of this resource committee membership of the housing proposals and review this rubric that's included in your memo. So we looked at their capacity to perform um, all aspects of the project, their approach, uh, understanding of our project and goals that was outlined in that RFP, and recent experience with comparable projects. Had they done this before? And timeframe for when they could get the answers back, as well as how much cost, how much it was going to cost us to do this. We probably, we had budgeted in our CIP ten thousand dollars to complete a housing study. And the CloudCore Board of Directors graciously agreed to also spend up to ten thousand dollars to be able to help out with this. Thanks to the benefit in the impact to the economy as well. So after those proposals, um, we saw that RDG scored slightly higher than Five Rural, four point one one compared to a four point oh six. So we're within five one-hundredths of a point of each other. Uh, however, the um, cost for Five Rural Rural Planning was uh, four thousand dollars less at twenty-five thousand as opposed to twenty-nine thousand. And it, it did some research into the companies. Uh, we felt that RDG may provide more of a canned presentation. We're kind of concerned about that because they're such a large company and they do this repeat often. We felt like the reference checks that we got from Five Rural Rural Planning was very pleased with the personal attention that they got, that they really listened and really listened and looked at the needs of that community to help that community thrive in years to come. And so for the reason of a lesser cost and the personal attention, even though it might take a month or two longer to get the results, the subcommittee would recommend the Five Rural Rural Planning as the housing consultant of choice, if the commission will, will approve that. We know that we're over our budget of original twenty thousand dollars toward this. And talking with Amber, we can handle the extra five thousand NCI P because we've had a project come in under budget and we can shift a couple of smaller projects um, down the road if we need to, to make this happen. We do believe that housing study and market analysis is incredibly important to us right now to continue our, our momentum that we have on building, thriving economy right here in town. Also, we know that if this is successful as a pilot for just for you, it may be something that other communities in our county or the CloudCore may want to pursue for um, other communities within the county. So we're kind of looking at as a pilot project to what caliber of response are we going to receive and, and maybe it'll just help, help everybody in the long run. I've talked a lot. Are there, are there any questions about the recommendation or methodology for how we came about?
No, I'm very excited about it. It's something that um, you know, when Kim's going to fill out her you know, request for information, they, they want a current housing study and they get crusty after a while. So I think this will hold us over for a couple of years perhaps even. So, and then it also give us direction on how to proceed. I think it's incredibly important. So I'm pleased that you went through with it.
The last housing study like this was done back in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, and was involved in the comprehensive plan. And there are studies that we can do on our own. The Housing Assessment Tool, the Department of Commerce has available, but that is our own perspective of our own community with our own inventory. It doesn't involve an objective analysis and it doesn't involve a market analysis from recommendation for a strategic plan. And that's what I'm excited about. The result of this is not only are they going to tell us what we have and do the market analysis of what you need, but they're going to give us a strategic plan similar to what the Roger Brooks study did in two thousand and fourteen. Here's what you need to take it to the next level. And I'm really excited about getting that right.
Are there metrics in this that will be helpful if we do decide to move forward with the rural housing incentive district or the moderate, moderate income housing as their formation, then that would be um, necessary or helpful in the application of this.
I believe so, yeah. Part of the methodology is going to be visiting with stakeholders. They're going to visit with the Realtors. They're going to visit with the employers that are having trouble getting employees. Um, they're going to visit with uh, just general community members to see kind of what their take on things is. In addition to driving up and down every single street and seeing the condition of every single house and categorizing it and giving us percentages. And then looking at other regions in Kansas and Nebraska and what, what is the demand for housing? They're going to be able to tell us, okay, you are low on single-family homes, three bedrooms in the hundred and seventy-five to two hundred thousand dollar range. That's what's in demand right now. Over the course of the next ten years, you're going to need ten to fifteen new houses. Look, and here are three locations that we've identified that would be good. Or they may say, okay, based on your income trajectory and your housing stock, you're low on apartment housing. And here's some spots that we've located that may be good for efficient apartment model housing. Or they may say you're doing a great job promoting downtown loft apartments and you see that as a great push. So here's where you need to push. And oh, by the way, maybe they need a little bit more parking here and there and this could be some ideas for you. So I really see it as giving us some good, good methodology and some, and some good metrics based on the data that's out there and what they're seeing that we need.
Think, I think that we generally know that, but it'll be helpful to have information that provides a greater flow of acuity. More.
Move to authorize Five Rural Rural Planning to proceed with the housing study and market analysis for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Let's move up by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Ash to authorize Five Rural Rural Planning proceed to the housing study and market analysis for twenty-five thousand dollars. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same signs. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to the employee handbook changes.
After discussing, discussion with the department heads, we can just, a couple of things. It's pretty slight for what it's been over the last few years. Um, the first one is going to be taking out number four for the seasonal recreation employees because we feel like they should get overtime versus pay time off or, or not pay time off, but comp time. And so we just took it out because they will fall under classified employees in number one. And then down on four, three, um, we would change that to say ninety days, which falls in line with section five-five that says the same thing. So that just lines up with that. Those are the only two changes we recommended.
I move to approve resolution twenty-two-one dash twenty-one twenty-three. So.
The move by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Hutchinson, to approve uh, resolution twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-three. Very further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to KDOT agreement for CCL.
Your commissioners, we have a KDOT agreement for a surplus transportation program between the city and KDOT in agreement. Um, the agreement, it's a ninety-ten split, plus the city has to pay for the design of the project. The cost of the project, the engineer's estimate's two hundred and seven, almost seventy-six thousand. And then the city share would be thirty-four, three forty-one. Can you answer any question you have on? If we've already approved doing the design work.
I'm going to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with KDOT for the middle and overall like project.
The move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with KDOT for the middle and overall like project. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passing. Moving on to airport consultant for airport improvement projects.
Yeah, commissioners, every five years, we have to solicit proposals to select an airport planning consultant. It's kind of a specialized engineer that does that for us. Um, heavy emphasis on civil engineering and a strong understanding of the FAA rules and regulations. And so our consult, our master group agreement with our consultant ended um, with the ending of the runway project. So it's time to go ahead and solicit anyone. So we sent out proposals and the FAA has a very strict guideline or rules for how we go about doing that. We follow that, that sort of we sent out proposals to several different companies, including Fendish, Campbell and Johnson, Earl of Engineering, Olson and Schwab as well as posting it on the website and in the blade to catch anybody else that was interested. We received two proposals back. Um, and that was one from Fendish and one from Olson. We used the committee to rate those and so that involved Ron and Steve Richardson from our airport advisory board and myself looking at those. Uh, very close, both very, very good companies. It was very tight. Tight scoring at the very end, but in, in the end, Fendish ended up on, on top. And so we are recommending that we approve Fendish as the city airport planning consultant for projects that it happened over the next five years. This is just to say that, that we're engaging with them. Then we send this information back to the FAA so that they know that we've gone through the process. When an actual project starts, then we'll renew the actual design agreement for that. When an actual project starts, then we'll bring you the actual design agreement for that specific project with with the price tag on that. And then same as any other project, then when the project moves forward, then they'll be bidding for contractors and you'll know the split between the FAA and us right now. So and just a heads up in all the products that are listed on this RFP or potential projects are all in the airport master plans, and the ones that we intend to go for the next couple of years are listed on our CIP plan that that you approved with the with the budget here this last year. The next one is looking at an executive hanger, and it looks like a multi-year project, which would maximize our available entitlement funding of about 750,000 toward that project. So that's kind of what our next one is to pursue coming up. But today's action that we're asking you to take is just to say we're willing, we'd like to approve Bendish as our airport planning consultant for projects that may occur over the next five years.
I would move to approve Bendish as the city's airport planning consultant for the next five years.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Wentz and second by Commissioner Hatch to approve Bendish as the city's airport planning consultant for the next five years. There any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to reports.
Just been spending the last couple of weeks trying to wrap up projects and then getting plans in place for the next one. So really, I think we've been kind of seeing coming through here. Couple of projects starting up. I'll let Ron speak to the next middle and overlay that we have starting up here. Any questions?
Part ahead. Back report.
Yes, they are starting to build and overlay. They built it Monday, if it was. Nine Street from Lincoln to Matthew, and they're going to come in Monday and overlay that.
What's all the concrete work? What what? I should know this, and I just don't, but well, they, is it communications trucks have been doing stuff around that area? I noticed that they've they've been digging around and then they put in new curb and gutters to replace others.
That was, that was a gas company to come in there and do that.
Okay.
They put a new gas main in from, I think it was Court Street up there or whatever. Down and then around Kansas and back down to H Street.
Okay.
They just, they haven't finished yet. I need to get, I need to call Chris Nothens because I've had a couple complaints on people's yards and stuff. There's still rock holes that haven't come in and fixed yet, so. I would like to publicly plead one that I retire. Just so you know.
No, what were you? Fighting a legislative.
December 17 will be my last day.
Do we have an option to not accept your resignation?
Says she's going to be denied.
I I ordered a denied stamp, but it might be on.
Until we have that stamp arrive, Ron.
Thank you. It's been a wonderful place to work for me, so I appreciate it all. Thanks.
Yesterday, we officially wrapped up our fall fall section of the rec. Going through the numbers, we had same volleyball. We had nine teams this year. They're about two days away from having 12, and then about three of them backed out the last couple minutes because of team or numbers. And those teams were from really all over, Bethany, Belle, Belle, Scandia, Bullway. So that's a pretty good adult turnout. Soccer teams, we had 10 official teams and then our older group was a group that we shuffled up every every week. So there's about 122 kids in that one. Which is actually a little bit lower than normal in the year, but they all kind of fluctuate in that range. It's pretty average. Women's volleyball, we had five teams this year. Black football, we had 12 teams. So that's up actually a little bit. And then girls volleyball, we also had eight teams. So between football and volleyball, it's almost another 200 kids from all this ball, so. You ready for the next phase of winter coming up?
Quick update on the imminent delay proceedings. Finally, scheduling was kind of a challenge, but we finally have everybody roped in. They're going to do the actual appraisal on November 5th, Friday. And then November 17th, which is our next meeting, we will hold our public hearing where they will, prior to that, I'll send out a notice to the interested parties what the appraisal is, and then anybody who has a interest, some type of vested interest can come and speak. So according to statutes and case law, like if I found out about this and was just a regular citizen, I can't necessarily come in here and start yelling at them about the the appraised value. Then hopefully, no issues there. I'm going to try to have that in the beginning because I kind of sort of told my folks I tried to do that so they didn't have to sit through a whole meeting and then do it. So hopefully schedule that about 5:30 ish, maybe even 5 o'clock. Still working on that with them, but they, November 17th, we have down. After that, we'll then file what's called an appraisers report, which basically states what the values of the property is. If we accept that, then we go ahead and kind of check within 30 days and deposit with the clerk of the courts. And then there is a 30 day appeal period that interested parties could appeal. Actual, not even interested parties, I'm sorry, named parties of the suit could appeal. And then so that puts us right about the end of December. I set the deadline for myself with the court for November 19th to have it filed. So that gives me the 18th to draft it, make sure it goes through and doesn't get bounced back to me. Sometimes our filing system with the state can be interesting. So that within, the clock starts ticking. And so I'll get notice out to all the parties then when that is filed and they get a, it's nice to be able to just send it to Rick and the great goes, we'll get it served. And then they get to take care of that day, which is really awesome because that keeps any delays from taking place. So then still aiming for that time period at the end of December where everything will be taken care of. And then I'll do the finishing paperwork, essentially vests that property in in our name. So any questions or anything? It's a whole lot of big work.
Let me have it said.
Okay, thank you.
I know it's that reports. Moving on to commissioner comments.
Just had a question. To Kirby, have you heard any more about the blue?
No, I think the gentleman did come in to see me today, but I missed him and I tried to call him, couldn't make a message. And I don't know if he's trying to revisit that, but he got interested in what the school was doing with those houses. And they were much smaller and much easier to move, he felt. So he went that direction. I hadn't heard from him since, but I never got a chance to talk to him today. But no, sorry, I, no, I don't. Ron, you know, there are a lot of a lot of expenses are moving water around from that sixth and seater location and monster out. So I I doubt there's that's going to come through, but I don't know.
Well, we will have to follow up with him.
Yeah.
Before we do anything.
Tomorrow. Let's see.
Regina?
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Um, I I saw a nice police presence during Halloween, so thank you. It was a great night and hopefully you didn't have any incidents. It was a, it was a nice night. It was nice to see folks around. Also, it's match month, the community foundation, so we just encourage everybody, there's a lot of grants that go through from the city. So if you've have means, please think about making a contribution there and it's your contribution will be 100, taken times 150% this month. So and that's going to be named after Bob Sirel. I guess my other, I've been kind of devastated, Ron, since the announcement. I think a lot of people have. So I think we should give a speech every meeting till he leaves. So count this as number one. We are going to.
Don't leave and we don't give speeches.
But just thank you for everything for for the community and working together at CloudCore, but then obviously I really appreciate it.
Along along those lines, I know as a as a citizen and as someone that's married to somebody who's been very passionate and active in trying to improve our little neck of the woods. The ability to have a public works staff member who's so approachable and so workable has been phenomenal. I really don't know if we would have been able to make Hood Park what what we've done without the partnership and without the collaboration. And so being selfishly, then from my own personal perspective, the the work that you've done, Ron, is so appreciated. It's going to be a difficult position to fill. I think it's going to be an impossible role to to replace. It, there's, there's never enough money to do all the work that any of y'all want to do, but we do appreciate how diligent you're working through your grants and and all the work that you do here. It wasn't me slowly joking about not accepting your resignation, so. I mean, your own decisions that remarkable.
I'll just let you know too. It takes a lot of staff to do that stuff too.
Sure.
It just ain't only me as staff.
And I think that's spoken to the true leader. For that, it's a good leader to be in staff too. Whoever may be listening on the interwebs. Yesterday was election day and there was a very positive voter turnout. I was really encouraged. I really thought it was going to be between 20, 20%. My invitation to anyone is that if you don't like how things are being done, please join the conversation to be a part of the solution. Really easy to sit back and to talk about how, well, I would do this or I would do that, well, then show up to a meeting and be a part of that solution. As gifted, as talented as I think we might be, we are all going to be well served with additional voice. So it's not always super helpful to be casting that out in a Facebook post. A lot more helpful to show up at a meeting and and work through some of the difficult conversations. So please, anybody that's out there listening, please be a part of the solution. We desperately need solutions in our community. And the more people we have at that table, the more dynamic our solutions are going to be. So please be a part of the solutions that are just complaining about the problem. Anything else? At this point, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved by Commissioner Wentz and second by Commissioner Hutchinson to adjourn. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.